Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna give folks a couple of minutes to get loaded up here. Appreciate your patience. Right. Looks like we might have everybody loaded in. I think we'll get started then. We'll get a few more joiners in, but we'll talk slowly here in the beginning. Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Karen Fassell. I'm the President of the MRC Board of Directors. We welcome everybody to this town hall meeting where we're going to provide some important updates on the future of the waste processing facility in Hampden. And we have here on our little Brady boxes just about all the board members. Everybody's got their names showing, so I'll point out our, our staff and our consultants. The board members are available on the MRC website, of course. We have our Executive Director, Mike Carroll, who'll be talking today. We have our Technical Consultant, George Aronson, from Commonwealth Resource Management Corporation. We have our Legal Counsel, John Pottle, from Eaton Peabody. And as well as Sean Doyle, who's also with Eaton Peabody. And we have Amy Clark and Joelle Ingalls, who are our support staff today, helping record and run the meeting. So I think that covers everybody. All right. Well, thank you again for being here. Looks like most people have gotten logged in here that we're expecting. What we're gonna go over today, and I guess we'll have some PowerPoint slides coming up here shortly. But Mike's gonna start off and give us a little, sort of bring us up to date as to where we are today with the latest developments. And we'll give a little bit more explanation and detail about the bid that MRC is providing. And talk about the implications of possible ownership of the facility by MRC. And we'll also give you sort of an overview of what we expect the timeline to be over the coming months. To what appears to be a resolution here on the horizon, which we're very excited about. And at the end, we will have a question and answer period, so. People will be able to put questions in the, use the Q and A feature to record questions in writing. We'll also let people raise their hands if they'd like to speak. We'll be able to do that. But please feel free throughout the presentation, if questions come to mind, get them down in the Q and A. We may address some questions during the presentations, but most likely we'll, we'll get to them at the end. So with that. Amy, do we have a PowerPoint that we're gonna get up?
Yes, I will get that up right now.
That would be great. And. Mike is gonna start us off here and give us a little overview of the latest and sort of overview of what we're looking at.
Thank you. And Amy, if you could start right out with slide three, that'd be great. Slide two is what Karen just went over, would be going over. So thank you. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for attending.
If you'll get that into slideshow mode, that'd be great. I apologize. Can you not see that?
We can, but can you get rid of this? By going up to slides, if you go to the slideshow icon, you should be able to click on slideshow mode.
We can get us going, Mike, while she works on that.
Okay, super. Once again, thank you, everybody, for attending. So I'd like to go over, like Karen had mentioned, of kind of where we're at and where things are going. First, I'd like to start with bondholder communication. At the first of this year, MRC started experiencing, experiencing a lack of communication. With the bondholders. We were growing very concerned and losing patience when not receiving any response from them. After the bondholders' former bidder drug the process out for over nine months and lost exclusivity due to not securing financing needed to close, things seemed to come to a standstill on the Hampden facility. Recently, after some tough conversations and negotiations between both parties, the bondholders and the MRC, we have reached an agreement. This is why we have invited you here today to review some of the terms of this agreement with our members and answer any questions you may have. The bondholder agreement. Before the bondholders let go of the Hampden facility and get out of everybody's way, they want to make sure that they have done everything possible to recoup as much financially as they can from the sale of this facility. The only way for them to feel that they have done that is to go through a sales process where the facility is marketed by professionals. When this all started in 2020, bondholders initially skipped a formal sales process because they quickly found a bidder with what they felt was an acceptable offer. MRC has agreed to allow them to move forward with a final sale process, and how this will work is as follows. First, the receiver, which bondholders have already selected and is all ready to go, will be, will get reinstated. The receiver acts as a liaison to the bondholders and a go-between slash moderator for all other parties involved. Next, once the court appoints the receiver, the receiver will hire an investment banker. The investment banker will solicitate qualified bidders for the receiver. The word qualified is very important, which we will get back to in a minute. Then, an asset purchase agreement known as an APA will be executed between the MRC, receiver, and bondholders. Along with the court order to appoint the receiver, the APA covers many things. This document is why the MRC feels very confident moving forward with the new agreement. It lays out the ground rules, guidelines for bidders, and a deadline with a resolution, which is something we've never had prior. Some of the essential things MRC negotiated in this agreement are. Buyers must be qualified to bid, meaning but not limited to proof of financial capability to close on or before June 30th of this year. Financial ability to complete, financial ability to complete facility improvements and operate at a loss until the facility is up and going and showing a positive cash flow. Must have the technical capability or provide a plan of technical capability to operate the Hampden facility. The final buyer will buy all the coastal assets and have all the MRC agreements and maybe others assigned to them. The facility will be marketed to bidders who intend to restart the facility in the same or similar manner as before and consistent with the existing MRC agreements and permits. And finally, one of the most critical negotiations we accomplished was it all needs to be completed by June 30th of this year. Not working towards a closing, not scheduling a closing, but completed by June 30th. MRC's role in the solicitation process. MRC will work closely with the receiver to get them up to speed on everything. We will also turn over all the information and contacts we have recently received on parties interested in the facility. MRC will then step back and let the receiver and the investment banker do their job. Once the bids are in, the receiver and the investment banker will then sit with the MRC again to vet and verify what bidders are qualified. Once everyone agrees bidders are qualified and requirements are met, the receiver can then move forward with the selection and final sale process. New owner in place. Like I said earlier, one of the essential things in this agreement was the deadline. The Hampden facility will have a new owner come June 30th of this year, whether it be a qualified buyer or with the MRC. In this agreement, if a buyer is not found or bids do not exceed the MRC stalking horse bid, then MRC will end up owning the Hampden facility. Karen, MRC's Board President, will be going over what the MRC stalking horse bid entails next in her presentation. Thank you, everyone, for listening and all your patience. We have come a long way over the last couple of months, and some good things are really starting to happen with this facility. Thank you. Erin?
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. So. As you all know, part of this agreement includes a bid by the MRC, which is, we're referring to as a stalking horse bid, meaning that it essentially sets the floor in the sales process. So the bondholders have a guaranteed amount that they'll receive as a result of this process. And it accomplishes a couple important things. One is it guarantees that the bondholders will leave with some funds that will help them cover the cost of the receiver and, and obviously, there are other losses. But more importantly, from our perspective, it guarantees that there will be a resolution in the ownership of this facility by the middle part of this year. As Mike said before, we've never had that in the process before. We've gone through several rounds of solicitations, but in the end, the bondholders refuse to consider the bids for whatever reason, or the bids didn't come to fruition in the case of DTE. So we're very excited about this. And. MRC's bid that we've submitted, as was included in the notice that you received, is a maximum of $1.5 million. And that would be minus certain costs that we incur from March 1st through the closing date. And that includes the outstanding property taxes that are owed to the Town of Hampden, utility costs from March 1st through the closing date, as well as facility maintenance costs and repairs and other upkeep. And Mike is very good about keeping tabs on all of these things, and he estimates that in total, those costs are likely to be less than $500,000. However, if they were to be higher than that, we have guaranteed that the bondholders would receive at least $1 million, regardless of what the costs are that are incurred since March 1st through the closing date. So that is the bid that we submitted that creates the floor in the sales process that's going to be undertaken. And on the next slide, it talks a little bit more about sort of what this means from a member perspective. As you're aware, we have sent out notice to all of our members because this contemplation of this acquisition and this essentially bid in the process is a fundamental matter, subject to special voting rights. So we mailed on March 1st a notice to the designated representative of each of our members. You know, information about what this means and what the voting rights are. A copy of this notice, if you haven't seen it, is available on the MRC website. It includes kind of a matrix that, you know, kind of neatly breaks down what's involved in the bid that we're making. It provides detail about those costs that I just talked about and the credits that we could receive against it. And the other important thing for folks to know is that part of the reason the bid is of the dollar amount is that it is, is that MRC can provide that, those funds out of the funds it has on hand. So that is, that's the amount that we can afford. We really can't afford more than that. The bondholders wanted more than that. We don't have funds available that we could commit to being able to pay on June 30th. So that's good news that we have those funds available that we can make. However, as Mike mentioned, it's not just the purchase cost that's involved in being able to be successful at this facility. Actually, the major part of the investment comes after the acquisition and includes the not insignificant cost of restarting the facility and ramping up waste into the facility and getting to that point of profitability, which will take upwards of two years. You know, when you think about restarting the facility, getting waste in incrementally, and then re-establishing communications with vendors and getting, you know, commodities. Mike, Mike knows all about this, about getting sales and purchase arrangements with vendors and things like that for the off takes. So we estimate that those costs are going to be in the range of $20 million, which is not insignificant. We are working now towards figuring out how we'll finance that, since MRC does not have that kind of funding available. And we have talked about this in previous meetings, that we have been working with state representatives, various agencies, federal agencies, looking for avenues to obtain financing for the MRC to be able to operate this plant in the case that we end up being the owners of the facility. And we've had very informative meetings and very supportive meetings. We have lots of folks that are very interested in this project and very supportive of what MRC is trying to do, very supportive of having the plant reopen. But it is very difficult to find a source of financing because everybody is looking for collateral. And the complicated nature of this facility and the fact that it's kind of a single purpose asset and its value to sort of liquidate and be that kind of collateral that people like to see is not straightforward. So. While we are working with some government agencies to talk about being able to get a loan guarantee that would help back and provide that kind of collateral for financing that we would need, we keep coming back to the being able to provide full faith and credit from some of our members as being the most solid form of collateral that we could provide and frankly, the fastest that we could access. Many of the state and federal folks that we've talked with have been encouraging, but as you can imagine, those processes do not move very fast. And given that we're looking at a very compressed timeframe right here, we're, while we're pursuing those avenues, we're not necessarily feeling like that would be something we'd be able to have in hand, you know, in the timeframes that we're looking at. So MRC is in the process, still in the process of putting together sort of the outline and concept of what it would look like if we went to members to request interest from members in providing full faith and credit backing to financing to support the reopening of the facility. And we anticipate that we'll have that more fully fleshed out and available to members in probably early April. Our goal is to, once, you know, Mike is spending a lot of time working on this process, getting the receiver in place. But once the receiver's in place, we anticipate that the receiver's gonna take over and the investment banker's gonna take over that part of the process. And we can move to focusing on developing MRC's financing that we'd need if we do become the owners of the facility. And let's see. Mike, do you think there's anything else we want to say about that right now? Do you have any other points you want to add?
No, you did a great job. Just like you had mentioned, you know, there's a long process with bringing the staff back, the training, getting your off take agreements in place, starting to turn the equipment again, all those types of things. So that, that's why that process would be so long until a positive cash flow. But other than that, Karen, you did an excellent job, and I think you covered everything.
Okay. Well, I'm sure there'll be lots of questions about it, but in general, the timeline that we're looking at is, as Mike mentioned, the receiver, we anticipate being pointed in the near future. And shortly after that, the receiver would work to hire the investment banker and then the asset purchase agreement. And we expect all of that to be completed in this month. And then in April, they'll be out soliciting bids from various third parties. We also anticipate in April that we will have finalized and formalized our request to members regarding providing some sort of a participating in the financing or providing the municipal guarantee. And what that might look like. We will also be holding another town hall meeting after we send out that request. Excuse me one second. I apologize. Sorry. Didn't mute my phone. And in, in May is the process where MRC will be participating in helping determine whether the buyers are qualified, reviewing the bids. MRC's goal for obtaining financing will continue. And then, of course, in June is when the selection will happen and the closing will happen. And with regard to the, the member participation in financing municipal guarantee, you know, obviously, when we send a communication out to members, we'll have much more detail with regard to that. But the, the basic concept is that for communities that are able to and interested in participating in providing that kind of backing, they would receive consideration in the future, likely in the form of a tip fee discount that would last for some period of time. MRC's goal would be for this financing or this municipal guarantee to be for a limited period of time with the goal that once the plant is successfully operating, that it would buy out those folks so that that risk and that backing would then no longer be on those communities. So that's the goal. But like I said, we'll have much more detail about that when we're able to send the communication out to members in early April about that. But that's, that's our thinking at this time. So with that, we have a few questions. And also, we'll, we'll, we'll consider those. And if there's any, anybody else in terms of board members or staff consultants that would like to elaborate on any of these points, since we covered them at a pretty high level, feel free to do that. And I think Amy, yeah, we'll go back to the boxes. That's great. So. One of the questions we have is on the funds coming from available funds, what implications does that mean to those accounts of which those funds are coming out of? And. I'm gonna see. Mike, do you want to comment on that? Or do we only leave that to George?
I think that would be a good George question. I'm not sure if I understand the question.
Well, no, I'll, I'll take it, which is that if you look at all of the MRC accounts, they're allocated to members that were, that became joining members after having been equity chartering municipalities prior to March 31st, 2018. And the answer is that the MRC funds are gonna come parrotta out of the accounts from the in this tip fee stabilization from, from the prior balances. So it is money coming from those members. Now, as Karen mentioned, we, we are looking at for those entities that would put up their full faith and credit, some sort of preferential return in a way that hasn't quite been formulated, though there are a couple ways to do that. And this is another issue that's related that frankly, we have not formulated the specific proposal. It's something that the board does need to discuss. And thank you for raising it, frankly, which is that to the extent that there are entities that are bearing accounts and certain other entities that don't have those accounts, and some of that is going for some 1 million, is that, is there gonna be a return on that that's different? We haven't had that discussion. It's part of the bigger discussion of how to approach this. So I don't want to make any commitments at this point. Just say that the question is noted. It's an important question. It's one of the questions that the board will, will discuss.
Thanks, George. I think it's also important to note, and I failed to do this, that you know, should MRC become the owners, we will undoubtedly be setting up a new LLC entity that would be the owner of the facility. So it wouldn't be MRC per se. It wouldn't be individual members per se. It would be some other construct. Again, more details on that would be forthcoming. Here's a question about how, how will energy costs affect startup? Also, employee wages and benefits? Are you looking at increasing ton costs? And we will say emphatically, no. Tip fees are in the jointure agreements. We have no intention to go back to members to seek any changes in tip fee. However, obviously, energy costs and wage costs will definitely be part of the equation in terms of the plant's profitability. Mike, I don't know if you want to comment on that. I know you guys have worked on the pro forma and the pro forma is very fresh. So it's very current, and I think you guys have been taking into a lot of that into consideration.
Yes. And you know, the one, the, I think the major key that we can say on that, and the one benefit is we have is when the MRC put their business plan and their pro forma together, we don't have the overhead the other owners had. We don't have the 80 some odd million dollar payback hanging, hanging over our head and all the fit up that, that they had. So that made a big difference in how everything looked. Because remember, they had all that with the tip rate that they currently had. And so we, we don't have all that. So that's, the tip rate doesn't have to change at this time, by no means.
Michael, if I can jump in again, a right on the note, right on the nail on the head question, which is yes, we are quite aware that labor costs and management have gone up, that labor availability is a little tougher than it's been. Quite aware that commodity pricing, parts pricing is different than it was. We have to put together our pro forma based on the best information we have today with contingencies. And we have to put forth a, a structure for financing that can handle contingencies in the event there are overruns or what have you. So that's all being taken account of as we go forward in the process. And, you know, and we're still going through that process. So I don't have a final answer, except that yes, you're right. Those are important factors, and we need to address them.
Thank you. Is there a new receiver or will it be the same receiver as last year? And I believe it's gonna be a different receiver, and we don't know that definitively yet. But hopefully, we'll know within the next week or so. If the MRC were to win the bid, who would actually operate the plant? Does MRC believe that it has the expertise to do so? Mike, you want to take that?
Yeah. So. We've actually been talking to operators. We would want to put the A team together because the plant's in two parts. It has a MRF in the front end and a WETN in the back end. But we also have, we're in touch with a few of the key people that used to be at the plant on the maintenance side of things. And then, of course, we still have a list of, of the folks that, that were working at the plant. So we would talk with an operator, but we'd work closely with them and provide them with all that information and then play more of an oversight role in a, in a role on board. But we would bring in an operator.
Thanks. All right. Next question. Can anyone purchasing the facility guarantee having money available within 60 to 90 days? Um, well, George, you want to take that? I mean, certainly acquisition price that.
Yeah. You know, first of all, we are all tired of people saying they have money and not having the money. So we're not gonna let that happen. I think we are looking for liquid available funds from people who can release it. But I think there's a second point here, which is even if people have money, that doesn't necessarily mean that money is approved for this particular purpose. Just having money in the bank isn't enough. It's having money in the bank without the conditions that might be placed on the money that would be impossible to satisfy in the timeframe. So we're also looking at proposers to be financially capable. They're, they're gonna have to make representations about what they're gonna have to accept. It's a deal as is where is. They're gonna not be making demands and say, well, if this is fixed, then that is fixed. Or this contract has changed, then we'll give you the money. Now, either you have money or you don't. And we're gonna make very clear that our decisions on qualification are not gonna be conditioned on the types of conditions that are, are requested that have been put in forth in the past.
Thanks, George. Would the $20 million member financing be another fundamental matter? And maybe, John, you could comment on that. I don't believe it would be. The concept is, is that that would be a voluntary choice on the part of each member individually. So it would not actually be an MRC issue so much. But John, you might be able to speak to the finer points of that concept.
I'll, I'll give that classic answer that it, it may depend, since we don't necessarily know all the details of what a financing would look like as, as well as any credit enhancements, whether it's a guarantee or other types of participation. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't absolutely foreclose the possibility that another fundamental matter may be needed. It really will depend on the financing source, you know, what level of debt may be involved for MRC. And how does that dovetail with potential participation by individual municipal members or a group of them in that? So I wouldn't, I wouldn't take that off the table. That may come into the, into the future. But as, as noted a little bit earlier, there are gonna be some more details on that to come. I, I think the ultimate goal would be to find what's, what's the best financing option or options for MRC looking ahead on this to mitigate as many risks that we have, but also do it in the best interest of MRC as well as the members. So I wouldn't take that off the table. So it may come up, but it's gonna depend on the details. Uh, so it may come up, but it's going to depend on the details.
Thank you. With the cost to construction of the facility at around eighty five million, how are the bondholders with receiving only one point five million from the sale? Are they accepting of that? Well, they are now. They, they haven't been all along. They've received multiple offers at varying dollar levels, but I think they've finally come to the realization that this is their, their best option. Um, and I, and they really are honestly hoping for better than the one point five million. I mean, they believe that this process is going to net them a greater amount going through this formal sales solicitation process using an investment banker, which is pretty much the industry standard, I guess. So, uh, you know, I would say in my uneducated estimation that there's probably at least a fifty fifty chance that they get a better offer that is qualified operationally and financially. Um, so I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on that. No. Um, is the one point five million dollar loan to coastal resources being written off as bad debt? George?
Yes.
Yeah. We had.
Yeah, just as the bondholders are getting what they get from the market, the MRC will get what it gets from the market. And I think that for an unsecured creditor to try to get a better deal than a secured creditor is a big ask. We'll put it out through this process. This was part of the negotiation that enabled us to get here. And I think that's the most important consideration there.
Sophie?
I am not at all disagreeing with George's yes, but I'm going to qualify it with the one point five million has been used to increase our bargaining position significantly. And number two, that it still sits on the books. We have just created an allowance for bad debt. So we are still able to collect it if for some reason suddenly things were flush, we're still carrying it there.
Thanks, Sophie. Here's a follow up question to the bondholders accepting the one point five million. Why would they accept that low offer? Is it because the process has been so difficult to find a qualified buyer to this point? Sean, do you want to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say we can't speak for the bondholders, but I, I think the idea is that this has been going on for a long time. Um, and that we're willing to set a floor and to help facilitate a process so they can fully market it. And so I, I think it's been the time and the process and what they've seen out there for it and the fact that we are willing to kind of move forward with, with setting the floor and it's simply the best that we could do and they understand that.
Can I add something? I, I would add to that, that we drew a line in the sand. And it became a line in concrete. And I think the, the bondholders got a shot of reality.
Yeah, that is true. Let's see, some previous bidders, we were told, were just interested in running the facility. Would MRC consider these bidders or employ them? Do Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, I think what they're saying is in the very beginning, there was a very long list of interesting parties and that list was divided into three buckets and you had investors, you had folks that could purchase the facility and operate it, but then you also had just operators um, that wanted to come aboard, but didn't want to have any investment in it. So we have been, I guess that's back to the other, we have been talking to operators and getting proposals from operators in case this ends up going, going our way. And so yes, that would definitely be considered if, if that's what they're talking about.
Yeah. We have somebody who's raised their hand, so I'd like to give them an opportunity to ask their question. Amy, are you able to do that? Are you able to see that? Ray Spruce?
I am. Hold on just one moment.
Although they disappeared for me, so I don't know if that means.
They're gone now.
Okay. Well, if you are interested in speaking, feel free to raise your hand. Well, we can let you talk. All right. I have another question here. How much latitude will the bondholders have in getting the closing done on or before June 30th? Can they throw a wrench in the gears that might put the closing out into later months? Sean, are you able to talk to that or?
Yeah, I think, um, I, I would say that that is a hard stop for us. Um, and we've communicated that and the explanation for why that's a hard stop. That's financial. Um, and so they understand that. So they're going to have full leverage to run the process in the manner which they think is appropriate with the understanding that it, that is a hard stop date. Now, life happens. So if, you know, we have to push it a day or two at the end of the day, I don't think that's something that we would do. But we've communicated that that's, that's a hard stop. Um, so they understand that.
Great. Could you please repeat how you see the municipalities backing the purchase? They apologized, they were interrupted while I was speaking. Well, the important thing is that we haven't completely formulated what that would look like. Um, and we expect to be sending out communication to members towards the end of this month or in early April regarding that. And we will be following up with another town hall in April that will elaborate on that much more detail. But the bottom line is that the MRC, uh, even though we don't necessarily anticipate that we're going to own it, we need to proceed along the lines as if we will become the owners of it and be able to line up the additional upwards of twenty million dollars worth of financing needed that we feel is needed to restart, reopen and successfully get to profitability at the plant, have the adequate cash flow and working capital that we need to do that. And one of the ways that looks like it might be most expeditious is to get a full faith and credit backing from some subset of members on a volunteer basis. So folks that have the interest and willingness and the ability within their town governance structure to make that kind of a commitment within the time period needed. And that would be in exchange, because obviously they'd be taking on some level of risk with that. That would be in exchange for some future consideration, likely in the form of a reduced tip fee for some period of time. So we're working out the details of what that um, arrangement would look like. And like I said, you can expect to see communication from MRC on that in probably the next three weeks or so. All right. Um, will existing technology be used at the plant? How do we know it works? Do we need a license?
So I can take that. The license and permits are still being preserved and still active. So we're, we're okay there. And the intention is to use the existing technology. We know where the bottlenecks are and we know what needs improvements. Cause that was all established on prior to the closure of the plant. So the full intention is to operate the plant has is make those corrections on where they need to be it. Um, and we continuously still watch over the plant and meet with DEP and keep everything in compliance so that we're our license and permits are active.
And it's important to reiterate that the sale process includes those parameters as well, that the plant be reopened and operated as it was initially licensed and constructed. So that's part of being considered a qualified buyers, reopening the plant to operate as it was intended. Um, can the MRC unilaterally offer tip fee discounts to members, i.e. financing members, without a vote by the others under the joiner agreement? John? Or George?
Well, first of all, I think, you know, when, if you had said Tiffy discount or equivalent, there are a number of ways to do equivalents in terms of the board's authorization to manage the distribution of cash. I think we're looking at a couple of different structures. The answer is we haven't come up with a final structure that passes all the tests legal and otherwise, and that's still under discussion. There are a couple of ways to do it. And, you know, but we are looking at the concept of a preferential return, which may be a more generic term, which would essentially compensate those that have put forth the guarantee, uh, the guarantee on the basis of a conventional guarantee structure and at a reasonable rate. And we're still working through how that processes and frankly, what it's going to be called and how it fits in the agreement.
Thanks, George. If MRC is outbid, will MRC receive a fee as some stalking horse bids may include looking to recoup the loan loss? Does anybody want to take that? I mean, I know we were going to, our costs will be covered. Mike, you want to start with that and then Sean can jump in?
Yeah. So if we're outbid, we're still going to have to sit down with the qualified buyer and go over all the agreements. And at that time of reviewing all of that, we can look at what the MRC has done financially to preserve this plant since it's been closed and start working those details out at that time. But until we know if a qualified bidder's in and what they are looking at in the agreements that have to be assigned, we don't know what that looks like until that point.
Yeah, I, I'll add. So as far as kind of the hot, the next highest bid, if we are outbid, we get reimbursed our cost. So the number that Karen, that you were talking about, the one point five, but no less than one million, that delta, we will get reimbursed this, the cost through the sale process in the event we are outbid. And so the receiver will set up the process so that the next highest bid has to cover that cost and any other costs that come in. So we are recouping that cost. But not the, but not the loan of one point five million, no.
Who will be the investment banker? And we don't know that answer yet. That's going to be up to the receiver to hire that individual. How soon will the pro forma be available? That would be something that would likely be coming out at, at the same time or around the same time as we're talking to members about providing full faith and credit guarantee. So I think that that's reasonable to consider that. And will the property be conveyed with a potential sale? Oh, meaning the land? No. Um, but maybe somebody can speak to the land issue. Do we have something in there with regard to the land in the APA?
There's no language in the APA right now as it relates to the land. Um, and I, I think we'll, we'll leave it at that for now. Certainly, we can have discussions about future opportunities with regard to the land, like we've had previously. Um, but it's, it's not, it doesn't speak to that at this point.
Right. I think one of the things we've talked about is having no conditions on financing that would preclude the money from being available in the timeframe. So if someone shows to us that in order to provide financing in the timeframe, they need the land to be part of the purchase, that's not going to happen by June 30th. So they're just going to be deemed unqualified. So I think it's not directly addressed, but it's going to be part of the qualification process and someone who makes that demand would be basically disqualifying itself.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the issue with the land, besides the fact that we're not that interested in selling the land, is that that requires a vote by the members. I'm not sure if it's an individual vote by each member or if it's just a fundamental matter issue, but John, are you able to?
It's, it's a fundamental matter issue and, and which folks may recall. You know, we actually, as part of the prior DTE transaction that was contemplated, that had an option to potentially purchase the land at a future timeframe if certain conditions and performance levels were reached. So an option to purchase, you know, triggered the fundamental matter provision of the bylaw. So that was actually a prior fundamental notice that had gone out to the members. So if there was any concept of another sale or option to land under different terms, you know, we'd have to again revisit that to look at that type of fundamental matter.
Great. Thank you. What is the definition of this qualified bidder that we keep referencing? So maybe we can spend a little bit more time talking about how MRC is going to vet operational capacity and financial capacity? Mike or George?
Well, I'll start with the requirements and then we can go over how that's going to be vetted. But of course, we'll have to work with the receiver on, on, on that part of it. But typically, it's the financial capability to do the acquisition. There will be no time for financing. I mean, in layman's terms, that's money in the bank. The finance capability to operate the facility, knowing that it's going to operate at a loss before a positive cash flow due to the things that we went over, the staffing, the training, bringing in bridge waste and then getting to full capacity. And then the technical capability to operate or show technical capability to operate, meaning you could have an investor that comes in that has all the financing available, but just does not have the technical capability to operate the plant, but he's going to hire an operator. So you're either going to have the tech capability to operate yourself or hire an operator. The difference of vetting these things will be depending on, we'll be looking at their finances, looking at their performers. When they go to put this together and showing that they have access or lockbox or that type of thing or collateral or line of credit for the financing on ongoing. And then they're operating, like if it's a waste company that, that, that bids and operates other facilities and they're obviously going to be a qualified buyer. It's if it's an investor that's coming in, but is talking to waste companies to come in and operate the facility, then they would probably be a qualified buyer also. So it depends on however they're structuring the deal and what that looks like. And then working with the receiver to review those documentations.
Thanks, Mike. And Karen, if I can just add to that, the, what we, what's been requested of us from the bondholders is put together a, a list of kind of what we need to see a checklist for interested bidders. And so we're working on kind of populating that based on our rights under the documents, the leases and the agreements on kind of what those qualifications are financial and technical. And so we're preparing that. So there'll be a nice objective list for everybody to look at. So they'll know in advance kind of what we're looking at and how we're going to assess it.
I think it's also important to add is after also with working with DEP, you know, the bidder or the buyer will need to be added to the permit that MRC already holds. And they require a lot of the same qualifications that we're asking. So they need to be able to be added to that permit. They also need to show the DEP that they have the capability to operate this plant or a plan for the capability to operate this plant and that they're financially capable. So, so that's an important too. Not only are they going to have to go through us on that, but they're also going to have to get a sign off from the BEP on the same thing.
And that will all happen before June 30th, obviously.
Yes.
So being the devil's advocate, what happens if we disagree with what the receiver thinks is a qualified bidder or the bondholders thinks is a qualified bidder?
Great question. And we went over that. So Sean.
Do you want me to take that? Yeah.
Yeah, there is language in there.
The, the beauty of this is we're going to be in front of a judge. And so if there's a dispute, we've set up a process by which the disputing party would file a motion with their basis for the dispute and that would go in front of the judge and the judge would give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And so it's a quick process. Um, we would have to justify our position. They would have to justify why we're wrong and the judge would make a decision. So we have a process set up to resolve it.
George?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that a fundamental premise of the agreement here is that the facility would be operated as a going concern. And so we're going through the process of, of defining that now, but in our minds, that means of operating on a long-term basis in accordance with a, with basically in accordance with the existing solid waste license and the existing agreements, which include a facility description, process description, and from its uses under the lease. And in accordance with a business plan that's consistent with the conditions of the masterway supply agreement and is completely consistent with and does not require amendment to the joint agreement. So we're starting with some fairly stringent constraints and as, as part of the criteria. Now, now again, right, there, there's discussion that's ongoing. I think, you know, we don't have written agreement on all of these conditions at this point. In fact, we're, you know, being trying to be transparent during the negotiation, which is sometimes requires some delicacy, but we feel the transparency is, is important. So we're trying to convey what we can about the process. But I think it's very important that the interpretation, the MRC view of what a going concern is, is understood because that's a big part of this process.
Great. Thanks, George. Uh, see one more question here. What is the meaning of a fundamental matter? John, you want to give us a little one oh one?
Yeah, sure. A fundamental matter that, that.
Yeah, sure. A fundamental matter, that, that comes from MRC's bylaws, which I don't have directly in front of me at the moment. But, uh, you know, those fundamental matters include, for example, um, acquisition of any assets or property over a hundred thousand dollars. So that's why most recently, uh, members received a fundamental matter notice. Um, another fundamental matter category would be termination of the site lease. We actually went through that as well as a possibility, uh, last, uh, November timeframe, twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, so there's, there's a variety of defined, um, events that could result in a fundamental matter. Those are all specifically on the MRC bylaws. I know those are all available on the MRC's website as well. But generally, you can think of it as something that is a, a significant item where even though the MRC board has authorized that action, it's subject to the members getting a formal notice, reviewing it and whether or not they would like to vote on the matter or not. Uh, that's the, that's the whole concept of the fundamental matter.
Thanks, John. That's great. Okay, since the plant shut down, can the existing owners prevent us access to the existing technology? Yeah, that's a good question. Um, John or?
I mean, I'll, I'll weigh in briefly. I mean, it's, you know, I, this gets somewhat into the details, but my understanding is, um, there's a license agreement, um, with the technology holder and the current facility owner coastal. And that's one of the agreements that would potentially be assigned as part of any, any sale process. So, um, there, you know, that's, the sale process will, I'm sure, include that as an item in detail. Um, I would say the answer is no, that they, you know, they can't prevent it. Um, but that's how that arrangement is. There's a existing agreement that goes with the facility that can be assigned to a new owner.
And is it also the case that, um, I mean, I think Fiber Right still has like, um, patent technology that's involved and, and they would actually, could still potentially benefit if this, the plant, when the plant succeeds. Is that true? Or so there's some incentive for them to agree to that? Or is that going too far?
I don't wanna get into incentives or not, but I mean, I think as a general proposition, um, you know, a, a significant part of the plan is that technology. I would, I would think that they would want it to be successful for a variety of reasons. Um, I'm sure there may be other discussions that occur around that.
All right. Um, if MRC ends up being the owner, what would it have for any liability with respect to any potential environmental issues or lawsuits that may ensue? Will we hold an insured position?
I, I'll, I can take an initial cut at that. So I, I think, I mean, I think folks are aware for certain permits and licenses, the MRC is already a co-permittee. So for example, the solid waste, um, license that goes with the facility, MRC is on that permit. Um, so, uh, in part, uh, that's why we've, you know, taken, I'd say, appropriate measures to make sure we're preventing any type of environmental harm or violations associated with the facility. And we are the landlord as well, but we're also a co-permittee. Um, if, if we were an owner, um, I don't really think that would change the status quo. We would still be on the permit. Um, you know, there's a variety of things that, you know, you, we would do in terms of any, um, if we had a contract operator, we certainly would be looking at types of environmental provisions to help safeguard MRC as an owner in case the operator may cause an issue, uh, or any type of third-party vendor. So obviously, we would take, uh, prudent steps to mitigate or avoid those types of risks. But in fact, remains around the permit now. So that's always been a potential issue. If we own it, we'll still have that ongoing, um, responsibility.
Bob and then Tony?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm correct in saying, aren't I, Mike, that the DEP has been through that plant, uh, at least once, if not more times, since the shutdown, or they've given it a clean slate?
Yes, I've had them in, um, twice now and to do their walk around. And I remember it didn't operate that long. Um, so, uh, I don't see any potential issues there right now at all.
Tony?
Going back to the discussion, though, does Fiber Right want this facility to, to fail or, or to be uh, open and operated in the manner for which it was intended? Yes, they most certainly do, because we were told, uh, in the run-up to the plant, once it was open, that there are lots of other people in the country keeping an eye on this plant uh, to see how it does, cause they might be interested in hosting a plant like that. And again, it, it didn't fail for lack of the technology. It was just the management and the lack of funds to make the, uh, profit improvement plan, to implement that profit improvement plan. So I would say they're very interested in seeing this plant succeed. They may have potential, uh, other locations in the country that are, that would be interested.
Thanks, Tony. Well, I don't see any additional questions. If anybody has one, please, uh, raise your hand or type it quickly. Um, I'll let folks know and remind you that we will be planning another town hall event like this for questions and answers and more information in the middle part, uh, we're anticipating in the middle part of April. But we do also have our regularly scheduled quarterly board meeting for April twenty-seventh. So that will be just a, a regular business meeting, but I'm sure we'll provide updates at that point as well. Um, and if you have any additional questions or concerns, then things that come to you um, after this meeting, you're welcome to reach out to Mike, um, or executive director or any of the board members, and we're happy to provide you the information, um, that we can. Uh, but another question did come in, let's see. Should there be another buyer? Do you anticipate any issues with transferring the DEP licenses? This can take time like the original startup. Does anybody have any insights to that, Mike?
I do. So we have met with the P, DEP and we've gone over this and that's why it's important. And, you know, we have the stipulation of plans that it has to operate as is. As long as MRC stays on the permit and, uh, technology is not changed, uh, it operates the same, then they are able to add a qualified operator or buyer to the permit. Uh, the only, would take a long process is if they want to change the type of the permit and remove the MRC. So everybody's on board to add a, somebody to the permit if they are qualified to do so. And, and just as a brief comment, that, hard back due to the emphasis on having financial capability and technical capability to be qualified. So that's, that's very important for that additional reason.
Well, I have to say, those were really great questions from folks. Uh, we appreciate your engagement and your interest in this. Um, it's, uh, it's been a long road and we understand that everybody's, uh, looking for this to, um, be over and to move forward and have our waste process at the facility like we've been waiting for. And we appreciate your patience and it looks like we're on that road. So we're quite hopeful and we anticipate being in touch with you all, um, soon. Um, as I mentioned, that, uh, member communication with more details about, um, financing options, uh, anticipated within the next few weeks. So, but like I said, in the meantime, if you have questions, please, uh, feel free to reach out to, um, Mike or to the board members. Um, we appreciate your, your time and your patience. Um, and I hope everybody has a great afternoon and a good weekend. That, I think we're done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have you, oh, one more question, Karen?
Oh, we do. Thank you for all your efforts. We appreciate it. We appreciate the gratitude.
Thank you.
Thank you.